Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, June 27, 2023 Escondido Planning Commission meeting to order. If we would all please rise for the flag salute. Commissioner Barber will lead us tonight.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll call, please?
Chair Paul?
Yes, present.
Vice Chair Barbe?
Present.
Commissioner Barber?
Present.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Present.
Commissioner Macaro?
Present.
Commissioner Spear? Absent. Commissioner Wyler?
Here.
The first item is approval of the minutes from the June 20, 2023 meeting. Do I have any questions from commissioners or motion?
Move approval of the minutes.
Seconded.
If we could call the vote, please.
Chair Paul?
Yes, approve.
Vice Chair Barbe?
Approved.
Commissioner Barber?
Approve.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Approve.
Commissioner Macaro?
Approve.
Commissioner Spear? Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
The vote is six zero to approve.
Thank you. Do we have any written communications or oral communications for items that are not on the agenda tonight?
None.
Thank you.
Hold on, I think there's a gentleman. Did you submit a speaker slip? Okay.
For an item not on the agenda? Dr. Timothy Blash? Come on up. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Timothy Blash. I'm actually in Del Mar, San Diego City, just west of the I-5, but I'm speaking today as a for myself. As a lover of sports and recreation in the area, I have figure skated for many, many years on the ice. And it's great exercise. I wish I could get more adults to do it. It's great for kids. The cutest thing I ever saw was an ice hockey game of eight-year-olds over at the UTC Ice a few years ago. But, and I go to some of the different rings, but the Escondido rink is closed down. I think it was two of them here. And in talking to some of the people involved, apparently the land is getting too expensive to afford them. I'm aware of a rink out east. They're rebuilding it. It's going to be $45 million. And it intersects with something that's dear to me in terms of energy and climate and solar cells to power it and batteries to store it and interactions with the networks. So I just wanted to raise the issue to the planning commission for putting more people in these cities and unincorporated areas. But what do they do when we're here? And if we sit in 30-story towers that are 250 square feet or whatever I heard at the last meeting, I think it might be good to think about how people could afford to actually do something when they're here. And some of the sports arenas, I think, can no longer afford to function. So I just wanted to bring up the general issue and interested in what Escondido was thinking about that. I think some of these rinks in the area are going to continue to close over the next couple of years. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item is a public hearing, PHG 20-0028, East Valley Specific Plan. And Adam, do you have a staff report that you'd like to present?
I do, thank you. Good evening, Chair Paul, members of the planning commission, audience, those in attendance. First, I'll bring to your attention for the commission, a couple pieces of written correspondence that were provided today, yesterday and today. They will be right into the record as part of public comments, but they have also been provided on the dais. So the item here that's before us is the East Valley Specific Plan. It's a new specific plan for the East Valley area. I'm going to kind of just go through quickly. I know that I've gone through this with the commission in a lot of detail, but I am going to go through the specific plan in a little bit of detail, not to the extent I did a couple weeks ago, but for the benefit of those in the audience. So what we're doing here is the East Valley Specific Plan. We're holding our public hearing, going to talk about what the specific plan is and why we need it. Going to then kind of go into some updates on some of the pending revisions that we've seen or that staff's been working on. And then request that the planning commission continue this item to a special meeting on July 6. So we discussed that a bit in last week, but when we get there. So for the meeting, first I'll go through the East Valley Specific Plan as part of why it's important. We're really going to talk about briefly the housing element and what the need is there. I'll give the overview of the specific plan and then a recap on the past meetings we've had. We'll talk about those two areas of major discussion that we had, parking and open space, and kind of go over a couple of revisions and modifications that staff has been working through on those. Discuss briefly public outreach and then our next steps. So the East Valley Specific Plan is, this is the cover page for it. It's basically a specific plan that will cover the East Valley area more or less from the old hospital site downtown, along East Valley Parkway down to Harding, more or less from the flood control channel to Grand on the south there. So it is basically a vision for the future of the East Valley, and it's going to incorporate mixed-use commercial and residential properties and development, or accommodate that, I should say. There's various sections in the document that discuss land use mobility and parks and open spaces. And the document really provides some good guidance on both public development, I'm sorry, public investment, infrastructure and private development out there. We have identified a 2035 horizon date, or basically target for when the impacts or when the development would be occurring within the area, and that's consistent with our current general plan. You'll see here, this is the East Valley area that's covered by the East Valley Specific Plan. So as I mentioned, the old hospital site is down there in the left-hand kind of bottom corner, and then it goes all the way east to Harding there, ticks in a little bit of the land to the north of the flood control channel along Ash, and then generally bounded by Grand on the south. So the East Valley Specific Plan is really intended to revitalize the East Valley area. It's, like I said, providing mixed use of residential and commercial development, encouraging higher-density housing. So it is densities between anywhere up to 30, all the way up to 80 dwelling units per acre, and we'll look at that in just a second. But it does serve also as the rezoning effort required for certification of our housing element, and that's an important thing to keep in mind. This is that tool, and in order to get our housing element certified, we need to have this specific plan adopted, put into place. Speaking of the housing element, what we've got in the element is a need to accommodate 9,600 new units. So approximately half of them are low, very low or moderate income. The other half would be market rate. The city doesn't have to build those units. We have to provide zoning that would allow for private development to build them. So the specific plan accommodates probably about half of that number. So about half those number of units there in various income categories could be accommodated through the specific plan. Specific plan has goals related to land use, sustainable and equitable development, site and building design, mobility, parks in the public realm, economic development and public services and infrastructure. Land uses, as far as what's out there currently, we've got a mixture of general, commercial, hospital and office-type uses, also multifamily residential development. A lot of that residential that's out there, some of it's single-family as well, is now currently non-conforming to the specific plan, I'm sorry, to the current zoning, because zoning out there only allows commercial uses at this point. So the specific plan will bring a lot of the non-conforming properties into conformance with what zoning requirements are. You'll see here, this is the existing designations on the specific plan. So the red is the commercial general, the purple is the hospital professional, and there's a little bit of a pink as well, and that's the commercial-professional designation. Proposal is to have mixed-use areas that are commercial uses and very high-density residential, like I said, up to 80 units per acre. There's also an urban residential designation that would allow up to 30 units per acre, and it would have a little bit of a limited allowance for both retail and office uses as well. There's also going to remain a little bit of commercial, general commercial designation as well, and park overlay that will be applied to the property and to the area in certain locations. So you'll see, this is the map as far as what is being proposed. The red is still commercial, the general commercial, and you'll see a couple nodes right on Ash and East Valley, and then all the way at the eastern terminus of the specific plan area along East Valley Parkway. The purple is that mixed-use designation, so primarily along East Valley Parkway and Ash to the north, I'm sorry, to the east side of Ash, and portions along the west side of Ash, as you're right adjacent to East Valley in Pennsylvania as well. That is where we would be looking at encouraging 80 units per acre maximum densities along with those commercial uses. The orange color there, that's the urban residential, and that's the area where we would be looking at densities of anywhere from 21 to 30 units per acre. And then you'll also see some cross-hatched kind of aqua or teal color. That's the park overlay zones, and those are areas where we would encourage development of parkland. There are also a couple of them you'll see in the alleys between Pennsylvania and Grand, and then also down between Grand and Second as you get towards the west side of the specific plan there. So as far as parks and public realm, we're looking at activating both active and passive open spaces and recreational opportunities. The overlay zone has been selectively placed so that it accommodates and increases geographic area within a quarter-mile of parks. You'll see that here, the teal again, or aqua color, is the park overlay zone. So the two larger blocks that are kind of in the bottom of the specific plan area, those are going to definitely increase that area that's within decent distance, or a quarter-mile, I should say, of the park. The other area that's in the top right-hand corner of the specific plan area, that's a property that's owned by the city's utilities department. So the city has some flexibility on that, although it is not necessarily owned through our general fund. It would have to be something that the general fund would purchase from the utilities department should we desire to create a park out of that site. As far as residential uses, the way that we're looking at is encouraging high-density residential. We've got what's called a density transfer program. It's modeled after something that's in the downtown specific plan, and that allows the city to create and manage a credit pool so we can capture unused density on properties that are constructed for use on other properties. So for instance, if you could build 20 units on your property, but you decided to only build 15, that extra five units would be placed into a pool that another developer on another property then could utilize. And that allows us to continue to maintain our higher-density needs and not lose those units just through the fact that they're not built on one site, so we can accommodate them elsewhere. The other interesting and innovative aspect of residential land use allowances there is what's called a target production point. What it does is it establishes, well, it's established by our housing element and helps us achieve our arena, our regional housing needs allocation. What it does, it sets a target of 25 dwelling units per acre in the urban residential district and 45 per acre in the mixed-use district, and the goal is to have development built at those densities. If a developer so decides to build at a lower density than that, they can do so. They would be required to pay a fee in lieu of doing that, and it would be going towards a newly, a to-be-created affordable housing trust fund for use for development of affordable housing units in the future. Quick recap of the meetings that we've had over the past couple of weeks. On the 13th of the month, so two weeks ago, the planning commission received a very similar, but much more lengthy, I guess, presentation than what I've provided here tonight. And we discussed some of the concerns or information issues that staff identified, primarily some of the development standards, as you see here, open space setbacks, landscaping, parking requirements and ground-floor residential development standards. The following week, which was last Tuesday, we discussed items that the planning commission had some concerns with and wanted to discuss. I'm not going to read through this whole list, but there's a number of them here. Bike network, roadway classifications are a few of them. Goes on to second page, so inclusionary housing in the trust fund, an East Valley shuttle, EV parking, loading stations, et cetera. So we had a very robust discussion at the past two meetings and really got into some of the details here. Two of the big items that we did discuss at the meetings were with regard to open space and to parking. So I do want to go into a little bit of detail as far as what we looked at there and what we worked with our consultant on in order to make some potential modifications. And once we have this discussion, we will be taking any further information back from the commission and be able to incorporate anything that is deemed appropriate into the document prior to bringing the final draft to you guys next week. So the way that the specific plan had currently been written, it required a minimum of one covered space per dwelling unit, and it had established maximums for amount of parking that was, that would be permitted on a site. You see the numbers here, anywhere from one up to two and a half spaces per unit. Commercial was identified as based on the Escondido zoning code. There were, for bicycle and loading zones, it was interesting the way that the document had been written. It provided both a minimum and a maximum, and it's a little bit, there was some confusion as far as why we would have maximums for bike parking or for loading zones, which are really considered kind of pickup-drop-off or, you know, ride-share, delivery kind of things, not loading zones for big rigs or something of that sort. There was also some discussion on, and some concern or input we've received regarding EV charging spaces and the requirements in the draft document that they would exceed the requirements in the, I'm sorry, in the California Building Code. So over the past week, and we've worked with our consultant, kind of come up with some modifications here. We are maintaining that one space per unit minimum for parking for residential uses, but we're not going to put a cap on it. If a developer so desires to build more parking, they can. I think generally the market will determine what product or project would be wanting or a developer would be providing for that. But oftentimes, and fairly consistently, we see applicants requesting lower than the numbers you see here, which is kind of similar to what our minimums are today. So usually we see someone asking to get like, you know, one and a half, one and three-quarter spaces per unit, somewhere in that range. So staff doesn't believe that eliminating a maximum, that it really is going to have too much impact on the development of the project sites anyway, but it does give that flexibility to a developer if they so decide. For commercial, we have established maximums instead of minimums. There are one space per 250 for most uses, and then one space per 100 for restaurants. But we do also allow increases through an admin adjustment process, so it's not a strict cap. There's a way, if a type of a use determined and decided that they wanted to provide more for certain reasons, they could make that request. For bike parking and loading zones, we again, we removed that maximum that was a bit confusing. You'll see when we get the final drafts together of the document, next week, you'll see some changes to the tables that kind of just basically remove those columns and provide a little bit of clarification in other columns. And then for EV parking spaces, we are deferring to the requirements in the California Building Code. Those requirements are going to get ever stricter, I believe, over the coming couple of cycles of building codes. So what we had in there would probably be surpassed pretty quickly anyway. Open space. So these are the requirements that had been in the specific plan document as it was presented a couple of weeks ago. So it was 250 square feet per unit of open space. 150 of that would have been common area. At least half of the units would have to have a 50-square-foot private area, so a deck or balcony or something. And there was also an allowance to create or to count linear parks and dedication of open space for public use towards that minimum. Talks a little bit about the type of furnishings and orientation that's there as well. Through discussions with our consultant, the commission and staff internally, you know, 250 square feet is a little bit tough to meet the higher densities that we're driving for. We did see at our last meeting a table that demonstrated that it's not impossible, but it is a bit of a challenge, and it's a little costlier for the type of development and parking, structured parking or either subterranean or podium deck that would be required in order to hit these numbers. So we have looked at some modifications. We're slightly reducing the minimum to 200 square feet. We're requiring 50 of it to be common. But the other thing, and I did fail to put it on here, but we are also going to be looking at incentivizing open space requirements. So if you would be hitting your target production point, that would allow you to drop the total open space requirement. I'm trying to recall what my discussion was with our consultant, whether we were looking at it at 125 or 150 square feet, but it was basically rewarding someone for building the density that we're seeking and that our housing element calls out for. So those are the changes that we've seen there on the, as far as the open space. I do apologize, I don't have that specific number here. Little bit about the outreach and work we've done over the past few years. So we started this process back in 2020, had a couple of public meetings. They were all virtual at that point to discuss the specific plan and how we were going to go about it. There were online surveys and a project website created. We had some informational presentations to the planning commission back in 2021, three of them there throughout the year. And then we've had a couple of meetings the other, the past two weeks. They were published in the newspaper, but for tonight's meeting, we actually did mailers as well, mailed them out to property owners, business owners and residents within the plan area. As of today, I have received nine calls and six pieces of written correspondence from the members of the public, and most of the, four of the pieces of written correspondence were included with your staff reports. The other two have been provided here tonight. Next steps. So after our discussion this evening, I would request that the planning commission continue this item to a special meeting next Thursday, the 6th, at 7:00 PM. That's the same time we typically do them. I know we had one last week that we had started early, but this one, we would be requesting 7:00 PM for next Thursday. At that meeting, we'll give a summary of the revisions that are being provided or that have been proposed and made into the draft plan, and then requesting that formal recommendation to city council. We will have the draft plan as it will be, as it will be at that stage, it will be included with your staff report. So the changes will be incorporated into it, and that summary then would show what those are. City council is scheduled to consider the item on July 19, and then that would lead to certification of our housing element this summer. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this topic, I'd like to ask you to fill out a speaker slip and turn it in. And while you do that, can we read into the record the written comments?
Okay. So the first written comment is from Don Zek, and it reads, "I've submitted this to the EVSP comment page on the website, but also thought I would submit directly to you. I try to keep my nose out of politics and government as much as possible, but I really think this might be the only way to gain success on the Old Pill Hill site, east of the old hospital between Grand and Valley. Otherwise, it will likely be another century of specific planning documentation and status quo for the next generation of brokers and developers and planners. I have been a commercial real estate broker in Escondido for over 38 years. I have leased and sold and represented many owners within the East Valley District. I appreciate the work that has been done on the EVSP and understand that it's necessary so as to meet the complex rules, regulations and bureaucracy that is government. However, the sector east of the old hospital and bordered by Valley and Grand on the north and south is a thorny urban planning issue. You have mixed use of old residential and old medical professional that was supposed to overgrow the old residential 40 to 50 years ago. Now you have a very old residential and obsolete office that has no hope for future growth because of the relocation of the hospital and declining demand for offices in general. Small, single-lot residences, including one to four multifamily, are at an all-time high in pricing, making their tear-down for redevelopment prohibitive. All of the above leads to a conundrum that is next to impossible to solve through planning documents and policy statements. I've given this a great deal of thought and looked outside our marketplace for solutions, and I think I have found one that works and I believe with some effort could be accomplished "I hope this email finds you well. in Escondido. Thank you for all the work you, Veronica, and the rest of our planning staff do for I leave the details to those with urban planning backgrounds, but the simplistic answer is our city. You and I haven't had a chance to meet yet, but my wife and I own a home off of Sixth that exponential density be granted for assemblage. Avenue in Old Escondido and are really passionate about seeing revitalization happen within For example, if a single lot allows for a single unit, two lots would allow for four units, and three lots allow for eight units, et cetera. our downtown specific plan area and within the specific plan areas adjacent to downtown, Furthermore, you could designate a couple of streets for shopkeeper units and maybe including the areas encompassed by the East Valley and South Center City specific plans. some for row homes. Advantage of this plan is that it incentivizes a developer to overpay on small lots because We're very encouraged to see the work your team has done with the scope of the EVSP to they make it up for it in density. address so many issues from housing affordability and built form to mobility-transportation-choice The city controls the density, and therefore, in concert with developers, can determine how much density has to be given to make it valuable enough for a developer to buy out issues and underutilized properties, especially following the move of Palomar Hospital and everyone needed and sell the units for profit. many of the medical providers occupying office space within the neighborhoods east Something similar to this is being floated in San Marcos for the San Marcos Creek project, of the old hospital site. except in this case, they're giving the density bonus to incentivize the developers to pay That said, I've been reading the draft plan over the course of the past two weeks, and I'm disappointed by the off-street parking requirements in the plan. for the large amount of infrastructure improvements needed to create the Creekside project for The requirements set out in Table 5.2 of the EVSP as well as Article 39 make it incredibly the city." Okay. hard to make a small lot infill development under one-third of an acre pencil financially for small-scale local developers. As a specific example, requiring two to three parking spots per every artisan loft or live-work unit means that this typology will never be feasible for the local, small local developer hoping to build these types of units on the aforementioned small lots. My wife and I and a few local partners of ours would love to build this typology within the downtown specific plan area, but the current requirements mean that each unit will carve out 500 to 750 square feet of your parcel once you account for drive aisles and lanes. This is consequential percentage. Each unit carves out 7% to 10% of 50-by-140 lot common to significant portions of the DSP and EVSP. When you multiply that across the number of units you need to build to reach 6.5% yield on cost necessary to secure equity financing from sub-institutional investors. Effectively, this parking mandate requires either undergrounding your parking or doing podium-type construction with parking underneath, which kills project performance for the local small developer, and means the only way these lots will be redeveloped is through assemblage from large national developers like Integral who don't have the needs of the community at heart when they develop their projects. In a time where cities across the US are removing their minimum parking mandates as a way to revitalize their communities and boost tax revenue, I've attached the list of these cities below, and current map can be found, and especially given our financial situation, structural debt here in Escondido, we can't afford to not reform our parking standards in our most urbanized specific plan areas in a way that leads to more productive land use and a more vibrant, walkable built environment. I would ask our planning department to consider recommending to our council to remove parking mandates within the EVSP, either entirely or at the very least removing the parking requirements in the EVSP for any developments under half an acre in size. If there's any way this message can be passed along to the planning commission, that would be wonderful. Parting thought, a framework that would be helpful for our staff to consider is evaluating our land use policies- local developer hoping to build these types of units on aforementioned small lots. My wife and I and a few local partners of ours would love to build this typology within the downtown specific plan area, but the current requirements mean that each unit will carve out 500 to 750 square feet of your parcel once you account for drive aisles and lanes. This is consequential percentage, each unit carves out seven to 10% of 50 by 140 lot common to significant portions of the DSP and EVSP. When you multiply that across the number of units you need to build to reach 6.5% yield on cost necessary to secure equity financing from sub-institutional investors. Effectively, this parking mandate requires either undergrounding your parking or doing podium-type construction with parking underneath, which kills project performance for the local small developer and means the only way these lots will be redeveloped is through assemblage from large national developers like Integral who don't have the needs of the community at heart when they develop their projects. In a time where cities across the US are removing their minimum parking mandates as a way to revitalize their communities and boost tax revenue, I've attached the list of these cities below and current map can be found. And especially given our financial situation, structural debt here in Escondido, we can't afford to not reform our parking standards in our most urbanized specific plan areas in a way that leads to more productive land use and a more vibrant walkable built environment. I would ask our planning department to consider recommending to our council to remove parking mandates within the EVSP, either entirely or at the very least removing the parking requirements in the EVSP for any developments under half an acre in size. If there's any way this message can be passed along to the planning commission, that would be wonderful. Parting thought, a framework that would be helpful for our staff to consider is evaluating our land use policy using the metric of tax revenue generated per acre." That's all for written communications.
Uh, great. Boy, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna get this good. Come on up, sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I am one of the property owner of City of Escondido. The property address is 1026 East Ohio Avenue, which is basically within the jurisdiction of that East Valley specific plan. I have been living in that property since 2010 when I bought it and it has a huge lot that has a two-sided entrance, one in the back in the alley and the front is on the Ohio Street. And the lot is pretty big for a 945 square feet, one-bedroom house in it that with the help of a city, I converted the garage to another room so I can have a room for my kids. But I believe the city has the obligation to allow me to use this huge lot and add some more, possibly another unit to it or an accessory dwelling unit or maybe a multi-unit because it's big enough. And I have already developed a plan for a multi-unit and approached the city several times. I spoke with Darren Parker, Mike Strong and Adam, who was very nice to me last time I spoke with them. I even threatened him that I'm gonna sue you if you don't get this done. So he says, "No, don't spend your money in the attorney, we're gonna make it happen, just have some patience." And I'm so happy that you guys get to this point because some of these lots in this city is pretty big for having a lot of house in it. And another thing is that bothers me is the next-door neighbors in the same-sized lot, same parcel identical to me, they have two houses, but my lot has one house. And if you look at 1018 East Ohio, you will see exactly what I mean, minus 1026 East Ohio. But 1018 and 1020 is exactly the properties that are right next to me and they have two houses and I only have one house. And I would like to have the opportunity to add another unit or the possibility of anything to use that waste of a space and dealing with so much of a gardening for, you know, having an empty land and not having a use for it. And so I've been approached so many times in city and I begged the city to allow me to do something, but they, every time I approached them, they basically hammer me down with the non-conforming zone thing. And I think that is a something now in violation of the state that's allowing every residential to have a accessory dwelling unit. But in this situation, I'm stuck with half in commercial, half in residential, and I don't know what is gonna happen. I don't even get the right that the state is giving me.
Thank you, sir. Hey, we're doing it as fast as we can.
Sure, thank you, I appreciate you guys and I hope this plan can go on. I understand if there are a lot of, other property owners that, that may not like the, the idea, but if they come to my property and they look at my property and they look at my family's eyes, I'm sure they will understand why some owners are willing to make this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And Carlos Shavarin?
Thank you for the time. I really just have a simple question. I, I'm not sure, is any eminent domain anticipated in this plan?
Um, sure, I, we're not really supposed to answer questions, but no, there's no, no eminent domain.
Okay, okay. Well, I was curious, I mean, I thought rather than read the whole thing, I'll just ask that question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else that would like to speak? All right. Okay, commissioners, questions of staff?
So Adam, did you actually have a slide up there, um, that proposed revisions to the parking? Or was that the same, the data, the numbers that you had up there?
Yep, I got that. Uh, let's see, so this, this is the proposed.
And that's, that's based on the old, the first draft, correct?
No, the first draft was this one.
Right, right, right. So the new one.
So the new one basically eliminates that maximum that you see there?
That's right, we go to minimums, okay.
And, uh, then it also addresses some of the bike, EV and loading parking spaces.
Right. So it's one space per unit regardless of the...
Right, so this is gonna be the, uh, the requirement that we've identified that would be provided in the, in the revisions we'll bring forward next week.
So, um, as I kind of stated at the last couple of meetings, um, I'm glad that we eliminated the maximum, um, so I'm in support of that. Uh, this minimum, I, I am not supporting. Um, and I stated this at the last meeting as well, that our current code and what those levels are, I still agree that, um, they need to be less. So the minimums that are established in our current code, I think are too high. If we're trying to, um, promote the redevelopment of this area at these higher densities, that maybe that parking standard is too high. But one covered space per unit, I think, is not enough. And I was hoping to have, uh, I don't know, some, some other options, but it sounds like we don't have any other options that are before us this evening. Uh, you know, the, I think that if we look at the minimums that are in the code right now, I think we could easily get to a 25% reduction and that would at least provide the ability to not require as many spaces, but would not get us down to this one covered space per unit. So if I had something to throw out a number, it would be reduce the current code by 25% in the residential. So I'm bringing that up for discussion with the rest of our planning commission.
Uh, right, thank, thank you, Commissioner Wyler. Um, 'cause I, I think that proposal makes a lot more sense than one covered space per unit. Even if it's not a perfect number, it makes a lot more logical sense than this proposal.
And, and I get it, it's a little arbitrary because I've got nothing to back it up with. It, it's just, it's a 25% reduction. Now, in addition, one of the, um, not the speakers, but the, the written, uh, comments from one of the property owners, you know, brought up a very good point that on some of these smaller lots, you know, 7,000 square feet, all of a sudden, if you're looking at X number of spaces, whatever that happens to be, we're probably, we might not get to the density levels that we're trying to achieve. So, quick math, at 25 units to the acre, you do the math, a 7,000-square-foot lot will probably yield about three units. I haven't put it down on paper, but with setbacks, with the open space requirement, I could support on 7,000-square-foot lots or less, um, the one covered space per unit. So I see the validity in that, but greater than 7,000 square feet, I, I couldn't support that. I would more be, um, inclined to support a 25% reduction of the current parking standard.
Any other comments on the residential parking?
I just have a question regarding this. Are the standards here, are they above and beyond what the state is mandating or are we at what the state is mandating?
So the state doesn't mandate anything as far as regular parking spaces? The only thing they mandate is a certain percentage of the spaces for, that are provided have to be EV spaces, in the same manner that they mandate that a certain percentage have to be accessible, handicap accessible spaces. Uh, but they don't mandate that we provide or require any parking. It's not a state issue there.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay. And then any other issues on this page? I'd just like to talk about the last one.
Well, actually, I'd like to, at some point, I, I appreciate your, your comment. I guess I'd like to see the, the numbers, how that would play out on paper, uh, as far as an alternative option, Adam, if that's possible, maybe for our next meeting, just to have that out there because, uh, it might well be worth considering. I, I personally think that this one covered space per unit is somewhat arbitrary in the sense that if you've got, you know, studio apartments with people there who are likely gonna use public transit, et cetera, there's, there's maybe perhaps not a point or whatever, I don't know, but it, uh, it's a little bit, it feels, it feels arbitrary.
So the numbers that you're seeing on the screen now, these are the, this is what is in the document that you guys reviewed a couple of weeks ago. Um, these are very similar to what the zoning code has for, for minimums. So if we think about it in that way, look at this and think 25% less, that's where you, that's approximately the number that Commissioner Wyler would be looking to land on. So, you know, three-quarters of space for a studio, one space, once you include the guest space back in there for a one-bedroom, uh, what, one and a half or so, a little bit more than that for a two-bedroom and two or so for a three or more bedroom. So it's, it's a bit higher than the one per unit, um, unless you're doing all studios, then it's actually even lower than the one per unit, so. Um, but yeah, it is, it's, it's not the one, but it's not what we've got in our code today, so.
Um, if I may, uh, Mr. Finestone brought up something that I had kind of forgotten about, which is meeting our ADA requirements. So all of a sudden, we got one more parking spot that may or may not be required on these smaller lots. And then, you know, a, all of a sudden, it could be, depending on the tenants, nobody utilizes that one space. So I don't, I don't know how that would play into, um, my, my comment about having one space per unit on these 7,000-square-foot lots. You know, I just neglected to think about that spot being an ADA type of parking stall that may not get utilized. It sits empty the whole time. So we may have to consider this, my comment, a little bit further based on the ADA requirement.
Yeah, right. And I, I'm, I'm trying to think about, um, people's options for, um, lower parking. They can ask staff, "Hey, I really only want to do three spots on my project." And staff can say, "What, you need to, yes, we can grant that," or "We need to go to the city council to grant that." What, what would be their options?
Well, at this point, we would, I guess, let me just first, so I can put a little bit of, of, um, of reference, frame of reference for what Commissioner Wyler was, was stating about the, about the ADA space, let me just talk to that for just a sec so I can get a little bit of info out, out there. Uh, the building code in this, in which our zoning code mirrors as far as ADA spaces, it doesn't require spaces until you have more than five. So if you've got five or fewer, uh, it may be four or fewer, I don't know if the trigger is at five or at four or at six, don't recall, but if you're, let's say, having a project on these 7,000-square-foot lots, I did the math as well, and I think, I think, uh, to hit that target production point on a 7,000-square-foot lot with a 25 unit per acre, you're looking at four units. So it would be four parking spaces if you're looking at the one per unit that we've got there. And, um, and so then, in those instances, you would not necessarily need an accessible parking space. Um, once you get larger than that though, then you do, and then it winds up having the potential concern, potential issue that, that you were mentioning there, Commissioner Wyler. As far as inability for someone potentially to request a reduction beyond what the limitations would be here, there's two avenues that potentially could be looked at. One would be through a density bonus, so someone is able to request a reduction down to a half a space per unit, uh, for any project that would invoke a density bonus request. Uh, that density bonus would allow either an increase or an increase in the allowable density and/or concession or incentive from development requirements. Um, in, in off, in some instances, developers look at, uh, providing affordable housing units as, as part of a density bonus request, not necessarily to increase the density, but to allow for modifications in development standards that would make their project work for them, make that feasible, so. So those are two, two ideas or two options there. Uh, or I'm sorry, that's one. The other one, and I apologize, the other one is through a planned development permit, which that does then require, uh, planning commission recommendation to city council.
Okay, so that makes, uh, the one space minimum a lot more appealing than... Okay, uh, loading zones, you were talking about removing the maximum. Uh, we, we talked about that some of those, um, in the maximums were maximum per unit and some of them were maximum per project. I, I, I think you need a maximum per project. I, I'm, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure where just remove the maximum came from.
Noted, I'll, I'll take a look at that again.
And, and, you know, so what, to what the chair had said, I agree with that. You know, there's some cases where a project is at such a size that having the minimum and it just keeps getting more and more and more, some point you pass the point of diminishing return. So, uh, yeah, in this case, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with having the maximum, um, for those loading areas.
So what, as you're talking about this, what I'm, what I'm remembering in the modifications we were working on is not that there's going to be a minimum that keeps going up and up and up. The minimum would be, you know, let's say two per 20,000, or let's say two per 5,000 square foot, uh, facility and, or for every 5,000 square feet. And then once you get to, let's say, 15,000 square feet, anything beyond that, you're not needing additional. So it'd be six if it's 15,000 square feet or six if it's 50,000 square feet. So that is built in there.
Okay, okay, cool. And so then the next slide with the changes?
I'm sorry, I thought you were just looking at, wanting to see this next one on parking. I apologize. So this is the, as they're proposed currently in the existing plan, and then this would be the, this would be the change that we're looking at. So it reduces the overall by 50 square feet per unit and then, like I said, it's not on here, but also the way to incentivize meeting the, uh, the housing demand and the housing need, uh, of that target production point would get a significantly greater, uh, reduction there.
So how does everyone feel about that?
I'm passionate about providing as much open space as I can, but I've gotta be realistic on what's our primary goal here, and our primary goal is to meet the densities. So I'm gonna have to cut off this arm to provide for what our ultimate strategy and, and our vision is. So I support what staff came back.
As do I. As do I.
So, um, maybe we're done?
That was it, right? Was there another slide there?
No, those were the general issues that I wanted to bring forward. The other information, the other items we discussed over the past couple of weeks, they were fairly simple changes, I think. They weren't as much of a, of the technical information that we wanted to kind of go through. Some of the landscape and setback issues, those are things that are, that revisions will play into the open space thing, right? If you're needing, if you're not able to provide as much open space, you reduce your setback, those kind of go together, right? So, there, everything else, I think, is either tied to it, or just other minor changes that we've looked at and have put into the draft that I'm working through with our consultant on it. One thing, I still feel like I didn't hear any consensus necessarily on the minimum parking number. I heard, you know, Commissioner Wyler had talked about, had looked at that, you know, one space being too little, and then I've talked a few, a few things, and then Chair Paul, you did mention that, okay, that may be a little more palatable. Just want to kind of get a feel generally. I want to be able to bring back a document that everyone can support next week. I don't want to go overboard, but I also need to, you know, make sure that we're keeping in perspective that this is one issue on a much larger document, and we're looking at what we need to do to get the housing element certified, so.
Is it possible for staff to follow through with Commissioner Barbe's request to bring us back numbers to look at?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. At next week's meeting, I'll be able to provide that, you know, here's what it is in our code, here's what, reducing it by 25%, by 50%, whatever it is, I can create a table to that effect, and that'll give a menu of options at that point.
I personally will need that. I'm straddling the fence here. I may be the only one, but I would like to see numbers, I'd like to see how it's going to work in the real world.
Sure.
If I could clarify my position, though, and I know I was saying, let's take the existing code for residential, reduce it by 25%, but I don't think that we should be reducing the one space per unit to less than one space. So, that's the one caveat.
Clarification. I appreciate you clarifying that.
Yeah, and I know Mr. Feinstone had said, okay, you know what, for the studio, it could be .75. No, I still am of the opinion that you have to have at least one parking stall per unit.
Feeling as well, and again, I appreciate you clarifying that. I had lost that in the conversation.
Apologies.
Back to the one, what you came back for the proposed minimum of one. You know, I just, again, want to point out that the world is changing, and we need to keep up with progress and transportation and mobility and all those things that really move along cities to get away from building parking spots. I can agree with the one, the minimum, one per unit. I think it's a fair, you know, in the overall scheme, it's fair, as long as a developer can still have that ability to reduce if needed for the size of their development.
I'm of that mind as well.
Right, and that's where I'm coming from, is this small development on the 7,000-square feet is going to be four parking spaces, and, yeah, that now the landlord, so-called landlord, owner of that property can split up those four parking spaces among his tenants however he wants, and the guy who's going to try to buy the whole block and build a big project, he's just going to, he's just going to come to the Planning Commission, City Council, and say, here's my project, here's how much parking I want to do. And so that, so that's why I'm okay with the one per minimum.
Yeah, and that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no.
Oh, all right. Granted, things, you know, the world is changing, I understand that, and what happens in the future, you know, nothing's guaranteed. We see where it may go, but it might not go there, and that's okay. I'm fine with reducing parking, but we also have to think about where we are today and the near future as well. And what I don't want to see happen is we don't provide enough parking, and then people are still hanging on to their, they're living in a studio because it's less expensive, but it's two people, and they've got to get from point A to point B. So, I think we're, I'm trying to get to a compromise that helps redevelopment occur, but it doesn't place an impact on the community at hand, where all of a sudden, you have cars everywhere on the street, and nobody can, you know, the next guy that gets home at 10 o'clock at night, he can't park in front of his house, he's got to be down the street and around the block. So, I understand where the future may go, but the reality is, today, you know, people are still tied to their cars, because they got to go to, I don't know, to Temecula to go to work, or down to San Diego, or someplace else, and mass transit's not there yet. Will it get there? Maybe. It's hard to say. It's, right now, for me, I'd love to use mass transit, way too inconvenient. It'd take me two hours to get to work, and if I drive in a car, eh, it's 20 minutes. So, I mean, I understand this, and there, technology may come along at some point that, you know what, you drive up to your house, you push a button, the car takes off, and it goes, finds its own little parking spot wherever it happens to be. I don't know, we got, technology is getting there, but I don't know that we're there quite yet. Now, maybe in 2035, when this plan comes back before us, or even before then, because it can come back, and we can modify it based on what's working, what's not working. I want to make sure what we do today is actually going to work.
And I have to say, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Wyler on that, regarding planning for now, expecting future changes, but at least having those options.
I expressed myself last week that that's exactly how I feel, so I won't go, I won't get on my soapbox about it again, but, so, I'm willing to accept what I consider a compromise that those that might want to reduce, that beyond what several of us on here feel is adequate to meet the needs of today's residents and what we see as the near-future residents, I'm willing to, the compromise to me is I'll look at it project by project and make a decision then, and if I don't mind telling them, I'm sorry, I don't agree with your reduction, I'll express that and I'll vote that course.
Are you good, Adam?
Yeah, I was just going to also mention that part of the goal of the specific plan is to really streamline development and to not have to bring things back to this body on a regular basis, so I'll take what I've heard and come up with a menu of options for next week and see where we land on that. There may be some ideas that, you know, that I've heard, all right, small lots maybe get a little bit more of a break, larger projects not, I don't know, we'll look through that. I'll chew on that and bring you guys something next week.
Okay, so, all in all, I want to say, thank you very much, Adam. You did a great job with this.
I'm wondering if I could bring up one item that we did not get to, we didn't discuss, and I wasn't planning on bringing this up, but at the last meeting, we were talking about, when it came to permits and conditional use permits, I was baffled by one of them, and it was regarding the firearms dealer, and there was information that the police department was for just the prohibited use and because of the crime rates and such, and I was wondering when they gave that report to the city. And it's just surprising to me, because I have found from law enforcement that generally, as far as the crime rates, they don't come as a result of the firearms that are sold at gun shops. The crime rate, as far as when firearms are used, are usually from stolen guns, not necessarily people that have gone and gotten those permits, or firearms that are smuggled across the border and such. So, I don't know where that information came from, or how long ago it was, so, and I just want to say that, basing what I was told, you know, and I'm thinking that maybe it may have been outdated, I did speak to Chief Varso about this, to see if the police department did in fact support that, because I would think, you know, I'm pro-Second Amendment, and I would think that, you know, a lot of law enforcement would be as well. So, I asked him if that really was the stance that the police department was taking, and he responded that, no, it wasn't. So, I'm wondering if we could revisit that.
Sure. So, just for context, the general, this wasn't based on a specific conversation I had with the chief or anyone else on the PD, it was based on, you know, historic data that shows that, you know, that firearms dealerships and shops in areas that are already high crime, that those are potentially, could be exacerbating that. I don't know the, I don't have any statistics in front of me, but I'll talk to the chief, and I'll talk to, and see where, what they're, you know, I'll get further information.
Because the statistics that I've, that I know of, showed the opposite of that. So, it would be good to get more factual information before we make a decision. Thank you.
It sounds like we're getting closer to a majority to keep gun stores. And it's too bad Commissioner Spears is not here.
Yeah, based on my comments from last week, I think firearm dealerships, especially gun stores, are highly regulated, and so I want to, just want to reiterate that my position hasn't changed. I'm fine with having firearm dealership in the commercial zone.
Before we close, could I ask, as I'm going through our correspondence, could I ask staff, I'm reading Don Zek's letter, and I find his suggestions interesting, I was wondering if you could give me your opinion on whether or not this would be doable and should be included in our plans?
Sure. So, from a macro standpoint, I think it's a very interesting idea. I've never seen that idea where, all right, you can do one lot, if you get two lots, you can exponentially then go higher with density. Now, the issue and why it probably won't work in our instance is that the housing element already identifies sites within the East Valley specific plan that are targeted at certain densities. And if you were to go backwards and say, okay, you only get one unit on this lot, then you've got your hands tied. You're not hitting that minimum, you know, and then there's also the limitation as far as strict maximums that are put in place through Prop S. So, we've got, we're, hands are kind of tied on both sides of that.
Thank you, that's why I asked.
Okay. So, do we, do we need to vote on continuing this to July 6th? Or, how do you want us to handle that?
You could vote for clarity, but I believe you have the authority to simply, as chair, continue the meeting.
Continue, okay, fine, then we will continue this until the special meeting, July 6th, at 7:00 PM in this venue.
All right, Rick, you've got the power, use it.
Okay, back to the agenda. Current business, seeing none. Future agenda items, that's for the commissioners, if you'd like to add anything to a future agenda? No? Okay. Oral communications, again, for anyone who'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda? All right. And, planning commissioners' report? None. City planners' report?
Beyond the list of items that I've kind of got as future items that are going to be provided and presented to you folks, that is, like I've mentioned in the past, that's not anything specific as far as order, time, et cetera, they're just a list of things that, and this is kind of for, for your knowledge, Commissioner Fitzgerald, that's a list of items that are, that are kind of on the radar coming up over the next few months. That said, I just also wanted to say thank you for all the time, dedication, et cetera, over the last month or so, looking at this project, at this East Valley specific plan, and being able to put the effort and energy into it and attend these special meetings we've been holding. It really is appreciated by staff, and I'm glad we're doing that and being able to get through this, so appreciate that.
So, I'd like to say the informational presentations would also be a benefit to new planning commissioners.
Absolutely.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.